How about now, can you hear me now? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
No, she's not speaking.
Wow.
How about now, is this better now? Leanna, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I wanted to use this microphone.
Yeah.
Just trying to.
Yeah.
Now.
Already.
I don't know why it's.
I was wondering.
What's going on?
Can you hear me?
Um, all right, well, we'll talk and it's great to know you. She's muted.
Hi.
Leanna.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Oh, now I can.
Now we can.
Oh, okay.
She's from, she's from M P Y. Uh, and she is, um, I'm gonna have Eliana who's got the heat here. Who won the, well, the second, second place on statewide competition.
That's so great.
School students.
She won a similar contest a couple of years back, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's very talented.
Yeah, I remember like in the third grade with Mrs. Durant during COVID, some of the stuff that she drew on what that we saw online.
Yeah.
She blew me away.
Yeah.
I was like, oh my God.
Yeah.
When I asked Eliana, I mean, sorry, um, Leanna, the sound.
You, um, good. I mean, it's a little quiet, but I can hear it.
You can hear us, okay?
Yeah.
Should we direct that more towards you, Tony?
No, no, nobody will have any difficulty hearing my.
Uh, do we have any guests?
No.
I thought we were having tons of guests. I walk into the parking lot.
Yeah, really?
I was like, what the is going on?
I thought it was gonna be like a lot of people here.
Me too.
I thought in my head, I hope they're here for the, the girls one contest.
That's all I got.
Entire family.
Maybe she's got a family.
What is it?
Facebook.
Facebook.
Literally.
Oh, yeah.
This is Laura Jenny, our, uh, our teacher.
Hi, Laura Jenny.
Oh, hi.
Good, how are you?
Oh, yeah. We have a poster and we have a soft copy for the family to take home.
Oh, good.
Yeah. And Laura, just so you know, for at least thirty minutes, we're gonna have a hearing, a budget hearing prior to the meeting. You're certainly welcome to stay.
If you would like a nap, you're welcome to stay.
No, no, numbers don't have to be that.
I know.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock then?
I try very hard to make it interesting.
And I believe, I believe, uh, the presentation would be more like seven fifteen. We'll come back at seven and check. Okay, because I think the parents, um, and Eliana have something they're doing and they can't be here at seven. I think it's seven fifteen.
Okay, yeah, the mother had asked me a couple of times where was it, what time? She had a lot of questions.
Oh, for me.
All right, I'll leave this here and we'll have to back.
Did she have all her questions answered to New York?
She did.
You know, I'm glad you went because I was.
Leanna was.
Leanna, I knew Leanna was.
Why? All the questions have been answered multiple times.
A lot of your questions are not mine.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We ready, boss?
No, I don't mind it.
Um.
No.
I don't know.
I'm not gonna have a chance.
I have another.
Two, three, or one.
What? Two oh one.
This is my first year of the new term.
Yeah.
Come in, you turn right, left, or right.
I had a two, I had a one and then I ran and then I, and one, and so I have a three right now.
Oh, okay.
I'm a real three. I'm in my first year of a real three.
Okay, and I'm in my second year.
Yeah.
And Leanna doesn't know what she's gonna do.
Oh, yeah.
Gina might have the codes from, uh, first and if you need.
When's my address?
Yeah, I think I do.
Oh.
I think I do.
Okay.
Uh.
But we, but this one, but the code for the B T has a login for the school committee meeting. Can we use the same Zoom?
Yes.
I think that's what it means. It must be.
It's the same Zoom as the seven o'clock meeting.
Yes, it is. Okay. Yeah, Abby says the, who does the little.
Yeah.
So.
It's the same Zoom as the seven o'clock meeting.
Yes, it is. Okay. Yeah, Abby says the, who does the little.
Yeah.
So. Is that my last name?
When you first.
Yeah.
Uh, no, but I couldn't, I just haven't logged in because also if you log in under the codes, then you can.
Are you, um, um?
It's automatically recorded, isn't it? Automatically gets up.
Sure.
Um, but it's now.
I know. I didn't sign up.
It does like this last.
Oh, I'm sure.
Everybody should know to me. I'm sure I can. I just, it depends when the coach, so I would start to like the little person. Who's the coach? And then kind of like, I'm sure she's a little son, just. I'm, I'm not sure.
Do you want?
Lines on this small little board.
Yep.
Sure is. You can. Um, so I, uh, I just can't, you know, when that's the ideal wants to.
And that one, um, they don't think they have like a real trial.
Yeah, I know. It's March eleven, it's like a real trial. Um, alright, since he wants to participate, then he's like, um, he's like watching. And that's been so, and, and I'm like, but I don't. I don't, I don't think football, so he's not doing soccer. So the only hump thing is, is, I mean, he's loving, loving. And I like bought his hats for me.
Wait.
Yeah.
There.
Um, yeah.
And then there's.
Cheese guy.
Yeah.
Uh, Joey's.
So.
Next one.
We know.
They're.
They're.
Uh, no, but I couldn't, I just haven't logged in because also if you log in under the codes, then you can. Are you, um, um?
It's automatically recorded, isn't it? Automatically gets up.
Sure.
Um, but it's now.
I know. I didn't sign up.
You know.
Everybody should know to me. I'm sure I can. I just, it depends when the coach, so I would start to like the little person. Who's the coach? And then kind of like, I'm sure she's a little son, just.
Hmm.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Do you want?
Lines on this small little board.
Yep.
Sure is.
You can.
Um, so I, uh, I just can't, you know, when that's the ideal wants to.
And that one, um, they don't think they have like a real trial.
Yeah, I know. It's March eleven, it's like a real trial. Um, alright, since he wants to participate, then he's like, um, he's like watching. And that's been so, and, and I'm like, but I don't. I don't, I don't think football, so he's not doing soccer. So the only hump thing is, is, I mean, he's loving, loving. And I like bought his hats for me.
Wait.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Um, yeah.
And then there's.
Cheese guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, my next one.
Oh, yes.
Uh, Joey's.
So.
Next one.
Um.
Very exciting.
Um, yeah.
Um, yeah.
And then there's.
Cheese guy.
Yeah.
Uh, Joey's.
So.
Next one.
Um.
Um.
Do we know who's here?
We're just laying there.
Do we know who's on this?
Just laying there.
Just us. Is there anyone other than Leanna?
Well, good news.
Okay. Now, Chair, we are ready.
Okay, call to order. At six forty three P M.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. If you would be so kind as to present the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four.
Yay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is with great pleasure that I present for the last time anywhere, the superintendent's fiscal year two thousand twenty four budget because the next step would be for the school committee to approve it and then it becomes your budget, the district budget. And for many months, it's been mine. If you remember, we have gone through five iterations. And, uh, we work, Chris and I have been working very hard on the budget. So the first thing I want to do is get guarantee that we are proceeding, uh, consistent with your policies. So your policy B E E is special procedures for conducting hearings, which I have followed. Uh, do public notice, make available the printed material and have the, uh, for people who are electronically, we have the material, uh, so they can see it. I have followed the annual buzz it, uh, process, policy D B. I have met the budget deadlines and schedules, the, uh, policy D B C. I have, uh, met the budget planning policy D B D. And, uh, we will be in the future following the budget adoption procedures, policy D B G. Um, so I wanted to say all that because I want you to know that I review all the policies every year to make sure that we are doing everything in, uh, consistent with the policies. Uh, we have also in your packet, the second piece of paper is the public hearing posting so that the, uh, it has been posted consistent with the posting requirements. So tonight I am presenting the, uh, at this public budget hearing, the superintendent's fiscal year two thousand twenty four budget and, um, respectfully turning it over to the school committee. The first slide in your packet is the, um, members of the school committee with all your names spelled correctly and your positions correct. The, uh, it gets down into the meat of the, uh, budget in the, on the third slide. The budget is increases one hundred and ninety four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars over last year's budget. That is a four point four six percent increase. That's the largest increase since I have been superintendent and I will explain. Uh, the, the school committee has always wanted the budget divi- divided into three categories. Uh, this started the first year I was here. One is the Johnson School expenditures. The second is district expenditures and the third is town expenditures and I will explain each one as we go along. This slide really gives an overview of all three of those and then I'll break them down in subsequent slides. So the Johnson School increased to seventy two thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars. The district increases seventy four thousand, eight hundred and twenty two dollars. And the town increase is forty seven thousand, one hundred and fifty four dollars. The significance of this is this is the first year since I've been here that all three categories have gone up. Usually there's one category where I'm able to actually back off the expenditures. This year I was not able to do that. So the factors are significant cost increases per supplies and materials. Anyone who buys food, anybody who goes to purchase something knows what that's all about. Salary increases. We have a collective bargaining agreement in place. Three percent for unit A, which are the licensed educators and four percent for unit B, who are the paraprofessionals. We will be entering in fiscal twenty four, the second year of a three year s- cycle. Um, we have two third grade sections due to projected enrollment and I'll, uh, explain that in a minute. The educational materials and supplies are significantly higher, just like all supplies. The swamp Scott tuition is up two and a half percent. That seems good, except it's on a one point six million dollar base. So it's forty thousand dollars. The Essex North Shore, uh, agriculture and technical tuition is going up. The special education tuition and transportation is going up. The special education testing materials, we need new testing materials on a regular basis and they are expensive. We have extraordinary building costs. We need a social studies curriculum, civics curriculum. And we begin, we need to begin to update the teachers' desktop replacements because they are significantly aging. And we'll do that over time. We won't buy all new ones. The next slide is the Johnson Elementary School budget changes. The big number here is the salary increases. I, I do want to, um, mention that the town is limited by Prop two and a half. So the town, which gets ninety plus percent of its revenue from taxation, real estate taxes, we are limited. Uh, the only additional things would be like excise taxes and grants and that is very small compared to the real estate. So when you have a three percent increase in your salary and a four percent increase in your salary and the town is limited to two and a half percent, something's gotta give and I'll explain that in a minute. Uh, we're going to, um, reduce the second grade teacher doing, doing to, uh, enrollment projections. Uh, today, for the first time, I broached with the staff that are very small class size this year in fourth and fifth grade will probably could be combined to a combination fifth and sixth grade next year. Because the alternative would have been for me to put another full salary in the budget, which would have made the increase over six percent. That would have probably required a, an override, which I always try to avoid. So we, we're looking at in the fifth and sixth grade combined to have fourteen students next year. So what, uh, Mr. Andrews and I have discussed and I have broached with the staff, that we would have a fifth, sixth grade teacher with a paraprofessional. We would give some extra planning time to that person so they can prepare for it. And that in that way, we would get the second kindergarten teacher without expanding the staff. So the, the total staff number would stay the same. Remember, we're talking about a three percent salary increase plus steps. So, um, even though we're keeping this, the staff, the same number, it's not the same expenditure.
Um, can I just ask for, like, in terms of curriculum, how does that work with two grades with one teacher?
That would work in a, a way that, uh, first of all, that Mr. Andrews would be in charge of as the principal, but typically in any grade, you don't have a curriculum that has everything in it, one thing. You have a topic and then there are some kids who are advanced. There are some kids who are in the middle. There are some kids who need extra help. Now this puts an extra wrinkle in because there are two different curricula. But typically teachers are addressing more than one level of learning at a time on a regular basis. And I would suggest with the numbers that we're dealing with and the fact that every student in the fifth and sixth grade would have their own Chromebook. And then today we began talking about online curriculum. Uh, it's something that is a challenge, but it's, it's a doable challenge.
Online in what way? Sorry, I'm.
Uh, uh, the, there are now curriculum, including the Massachusetts State Curricula, that the materials are online. So for certain students who would be taught a particular subject in, for example, I'll take civics. Um, the topic would be, um, broached and then the students can use their Chromebooks to do their own research online to find out more in-depth material.
So they would have some sort of instruction based in person and then with direction to proceed online.
Right, which is not different than is done on a regular basis right now.
Right, I just.
Right.
Wanted clarification on what that meant.
Michelle, my, um, the system that I run is ungraded. So like, for example, there's a section of kids that are, um, tend to come in and it would be like having a seventh through nine point five, that kind of a spread. Um, and the teachers differentiate and they use blended learning, which is, um, in person, some small groups, some whole group instruction and use online. Um, we do, we have sort of projects that they tackle, um, to, that are interdisciplinary. And that's how they move through to be able to catch up, but it's the way that we can like catch up big gaps, you know, uh, skill gaps in kids that are all relatively this, the same, like two years spread of age. So, um, and there's a lot more of that now since the pandemic. The thing that I would ask though related to that, just knowing a little bit about, um, what it takes to get teachers ready is even in a small gap, you know, a small spread between two grade levels, differentiation is a, it's a topic that's difficult, you know, for, for teachers that haven't experienced it before. So I wonder are you thinking about the P V and some of the other inputs that would have to be put in place to support the, the teacher and the para to be able to feel, you know, confident, excited if they don't already have that kind of training.
Uh, they do have some differentiation training. Uh, I approached it with the staff at the faculty meeting today in a two-step. One, I broached the concept. The second step was, um, it's necessary because of the fiscal stress. I mean, it's really hard to justify a group of five and eight.
Yeah.
Um, and we are going to re- request, um, teachers to give us their preferences. I, I wanna emphasize preferences, not their choice. It's the principal's job to determine who teaches what grades.
Right.
But we want the, uh, teachers to be able to communicate, you know, those that are most comfortable.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then I promised them that they would get extra time, uh, either in the, in the spring or in the summer or both to help plan. They would get extra planning time and that would include, uh, getting them some guidance from, uh, someone who's expert in, in differentiation.
It's great.
We haven't done it yet, of course, because A, I don't know who and, uh, obviously it's early.
Can I ask one more question? Cause I know you need to move on, but, um, if the enrollment for the incoming kindergarten is not what's expected, would you still be making a combined classroom or?
Um, yes, probably because once again, when you're asking for a four point five percent increase, a class of five and eight are really conceptually problematic.
Right.
I can just about guarantee that we need two kindergarten classrooms. We have twenty five students currently in our preschool who are aging into kindergarten. We have at least seven more who are going to other preschools who are going to be aging into kindergarten. That's thirty two.
Yeah.
Typically in the summer, we get somewhere between four and six unknown students who we don't even know are out there who may be moving into community.
Right.
They may be in prokial private, um, daycare. They may be in parochial private um daycare. So I don't see us having one kindergarten. If it happens, yeah, we're flexible.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have one more question, sorry, um, were there any other concerns from the teachers that? Um, you know, that, that were addressed at the meeting so that we're aware. Um, in terms of the combined classroom.
Um, there were no comments, it was really. I broached it with them so they would know what we would be talking about today. Uh, those concerned questions and dialogues are yet to happen.
Okay.
But if there are any, um, I'm sure we have the labor management. Uh, meetings that you agree to with the contract for the, for the last three, uh, two years. Uh, we'll be bringing it up there, and if there's any real pushback or any real concerns, I'll bring them to you.
Okay.
Um, it was, it was quiet, yeah, the room was quiet, everyone was listening intently, but again, it's the first time they, they've heard it.
Right.
Uh, I would imagine that they were thinking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't imagine that with a classroom of five, somebody said, oh, we're gonna have five kids in the room forever. Okay? Um. Educational supplies and materials, building maintenance, we are going to continue with the John Collins Writing Program. Uh, the social studies materials or the uh civics materials. And the technology replacements I mentioned previously, all go into the Johnson Elementary School change. The seventy two thousand six hundred thirty five dollars is thirty seven point three percent of the total budget increase of one hundred ninety. Four thousand. Then we have on the next slide, the district budget changes. The district categories are much smaller than a Johnson Elementary School categories. That's the tuition for the junior, senior high school students. Notice that the forty thousand one hundred and seventy nine dollars, although it's a great deal. It's a two and a half percent increase, which when we signed it, we were thrilled with, it's still forty thousand dollars. So it's twenty percent, twenty point six percent of the increase. The superintendent's office is up forty seven hundred dollars, the school committee costs are up four hundred and twenty two dollars. And then the out of district tuition and the collaborative is up twenty nine thousand four hundred and ninety six dollars. I actually went through every special education student. We projected where they would be next year. We projected the tuition increase of five percent, hopefully that's enough. And so that's a real number, that's not a projection. And the total district change is seventy four thousand eight hundred and twenty two dollars, which interestingly is. Thirty eight point four percent, so I, I didn't try to have these numbers this close. And then the town budget is even fewer categories. That's the out of district transportation, that's up significantly. However, if you look back over the last five years, our out of district transportation costs have been dwindling. Four straight years, this is the first year where it's popping up. We've been very uh economical and efficient. Some parents, we pay a, a, a mileage fee to take their children. And we have been cutting, as you know, the out of district uh tuitions. And, but that number is going to be going up. Uh, it's going up everywhere, and it's a variety of issues, including COVID. So the general education transportation is only up thirty eight hundred and fifty four dollars, that great contract that we signed. And then the Essex tuition is going up a thousand eighty seven dollars, once again, that's an actual number. So the town change is up forty seven thousand one hundred fifty four dollars or twenty four percent of the whole. So we have two larger views, the first one is on the next slide, that is just the view of twenty four versus twenty three. And if you notice. The um, the increases are. Fairly significant totaling four point four six percent. But it's a hundred ninety four thousand six hundred and ten dollars. And uh I've explained every category of increase. The next slide gives you a five-year view. Which I think is important, because you'll see that we've been doing very, very well. Uh, in a time when um school budgets have been escalating at about four point one, four point four percent. Uh, we have had a three, three point zero average. Now that includes if you take this year's four point four six. If you take this year's out, our average has been about two point five, which is actually where we wanted. Because that matches the um. The taxation cap, right, the prop two and a half. That's where we want it to be. I have done one more calculation that I think you will find interesting. I did not make a slide because I tried to avoid. The general ed versus non-general ed war. But if you take. Our special education tuition and transportation increase. That alone is seventy one thousand three hundred dollars of the whole. That's thirty six percent of the increase. Then if you add the transportation contract with Healy to get our middle school kids. Excuse me, uh, yeah. Excuse me, not, not the transportation, the tuition contract was with Swam Scott, which is forty thousand. That is one hundred and eleven thousand four hundred and seventy seven dollars, those three things. Are two point five percent of the four point four percent increase. Without those three items, it's a one point nine percent increase. That includes everything going up. So I did the best I could. And um. I can't see presenting you a budget that isn't real, that I'm not comfortable with. I have never gone back to a town or a city for more money during a school year. And I had, I hope that the budget I put before you is one that you will support. And that have, you will have confidence in that we will be able to function next year. With as low an increase that's feasible while we're doing everything for our students. And providing our staff with everything they need in order to do their jobs.
Um, what happens if the enrollment in like Essex test changes? Because I know we have a certain amount that we pay for, but additional students can choose to enroll. And that would be at a cost to us from our understanding. How, how does that get accounted for in the budget? And, and similarly, you know, something happens during school year, just remind me what happens if like a student gets moved to another district placement. You know, that, that wasn't anticipated in the budget.
I know who's out there.
Yeah.
And I had tried to anticipate, I'm going to take the special education first. I tried to anticipate where they would be, even though I'm not part of the IEP process. And take that into account. The Essex is even more interesting. On October first of year one. The year two tuition is set. So we know who we're paying for in fiscal twenty four. Because on October first, two thousand twenty two. And this is where it gets confusing. No. What Essex will charge us is set by the number of students we have on October first of the previous year.
Oh.
Now that can work both ways.
Right.
Cause this year, we're paying for a student at Essex that's not there anymore.
Okay.
Because they were there the year before. But it, but it's stable, so Essex eats the unknowns.
Right.
And we eat the reductions.
No one there.
So my numbers.
Okay.
My number is good.
It doesn't matter, though, whether it's an Essex student or Swam Scott High School student, right? Like, it doesn't matter where they go, because we have to pay for either.
No, actually, the, the deal I negotiated with the school committee's support. We don't pay for extra students at Swam Scott.
Right.
We have a, we have a number.
Okay.
That we really negotiated for many, many weeks. When we signed the previous contract. And that was a big change. But the finance committee of both towns and the selectmen of both towns wanted a known quantity.
Yeah.
Previous to the current contract. If we had five students move in during the school year, we would have five tuitions to. Uh, Swam Scott High School that we wouldn't have accounted for.
Right.
Now we pay a number, that number goes up two and a half percent every year, and that's it. Now, our population is dropping temporarily. So our pup, per pupil at Swam Scott, Swam Scott Middle School and High School is actually going up. But in the long run, it's much better for us.
Okay.
Cause it's the finance committee and I can, I know exactly how much Swam Scott bill is gonna be.
Right.
So did they at the time, they looked and they said, generally speaking, you have around twenty kids that go every year, so we're just gonna charge you for twenty kids. And if five more kids move into the hot, then we're gonna absorb them. And if we lose five, then you pay.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's exactly how it happened. Uh, actually, I wasn't privy to their finance committee and school committee discussions in Swam Scott. I don't know what number they used, but the concept is exactly, they said.
Yeah.
We want the number to be one point three point four, you know, this, this much money, we did the math. It was reasonable compared to the number of mu- uh dollars, we, we were spending for each student. And they were spending for each student, and that was our base.
Okay. Interesting. The one other um comments question I have is um I read that um. There's proposals or maybe the bill, was it up for vote um to have free school lunch again next year with that? Or in like, um, continue that process, it's federally funded, but yeah. So I think it was something that Massachusetts is doing on its own.
Yes.
And is that impactful in any way?
Not a penny.
Okay.
Um, we either pay for our school lunches in one of three ways. Right now, the federal government picks up the total cost, and I believe it's off the top of my head, four dollars and forty six cents a lunch, that includes the milk. If they drop that program. Then the students who are on free lunch would get the federal money. And those who aren't, parents would pay.
Okay.
It's a revolving account, so there's no money in the budget.
Okay.
Um. We do have a little bit of leeway there, we uh, we're waiting for a significant uh payment from the state. Um, but it's not a budget item.
Okay.
It's, it's a ma- it's a Tony management issue.
Yeah.
To make sure that what we're paying for lunches is covered by what we're gonna get and how much we charge.
Okay.
Which it is.
Thank you.
The other thing and the concept I want to leave the school committee with. Is you're looking at a budget to budget comparison. Historically, under my leadership, we have never spent one hundred percent of our budget funds. Uh, I want to remind the members of the school committee that unspent school budget. Funds are returned to the town as free cash. And every year I've been here, we have been returning more and more money. However, cutting the budget to reflect. That we had X dollars left over last year's budget isn't the way to do business, in my opinion. That's how superintendents and school committees get into positions where they don't have enough money to cover their budget. Because they say, okay, we need, I'm gonna round everything, we need a million dollars. Last year, we spent nine hundred thousand. But we returned a hundred thousand, so this year we only really need nine hundred thousand.
Right.
And any unforeseen expenditures are shot.
Yep.
So a concrete example of that is that fiscal twenty two money. Not this year's budget, but last year's budget. That's how we bought the phone system, and that's how we put the alarm system in. So I encumbered money at the end of fiscal twenty two. To spend in fiscal twenty three, if the budget had been tight. I couldn't do that. Later in the next meeting, I'm gonna tell you about our HVAC system. And I'm gonna show you communication from the finance director who's basically said, go for it. Because she knows that uh typically, we have been in a budget positive position.
My only question um that's left that hasn't been addressed relates to a bus monitor. I know we've had some discussions, but is there any, has that been factored into this budget at all? I believe in Madam Chair, I believe Ms. Deloye may have had a question.
Oh, yeah, that's okay, whenever she's done, I can just, it's just a general question.
Uh. I did not fa- factor a bus monitor in for a variety of reasons, uh, let me enumerate them. Number one, Healy Bus Company, who provides the transportation, has no monitors and has no monitors on any of their buses. Including parochial, private and public schools. Number two, I asked them to post the position, and they refused, they said, we're not getting into the bus monitor business. I then talked to the middle school um principal, and he's posting it, but I had no idea how much the budget, so I left it at zero.
Okay.
Uh, later, when I give you my update on that issue, I will also tell you that I followed up and the. The individual or individuals who were causing problems have been addressed by the middle school.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
And Leanna?
Um, yes, um, so I guess I have a question. Well, how does it work, uh, Tony, if? You know, the proposed budget is the way it is, I know, and then I know in March is the official hearing, but would have been changed between. March and the end of the school year where we need to modify the budget in any way for staffing or for other reasons, like is, is it? Final as of March, or are there addendums that can be sort of modified? I don't understand how that works.
Is it final once we vote on that?
Yes, um.
Because how does, like, okay, so. Uh, if we vote tonight on the way it is, then that is it for the upcoming year, like, we cannot make any changes at all.
That's actually a great question. The process under mass general law looks like this. Uh, the superintendent presents a budget, and we've been doing that for about two months. The school committee then takes the superintendent's budget. And the school committee can reduce it, add to it, or accept it. The school committee votes on the budget. However, the school committee has no fiscal authority in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The school committee's budget is then presented to the finance committee of the town. The finance committee of the town under mass general law can do two things. Accept the school committee's budget and present it at town meeting. Or present it at, at town meeting with a rejection. They can't alter it. If it's rejected by the finance committee, it goes to town meeting. And the town meeting has the authority to accept the finance committee recommendation. Whatever it may be, or reject it. If the budget is rejected, there's a process where the community has to go back. Starting with me and the school committee and reduce the budget. And then present it again.
Okay.
At a special town meeting.
Okay.
It's only town meeting that can actually have the authority to spend the money or. Approved the spending of the money. In my career, I have never had a special town meeting required. Um, and that's because I work with the town administrator um and the school committee to try to mitigate it. I also give the finance committee all the information they want, whatever they want. And um if you, you know, my, my presentation details why we need the money we need and um I have been, I I just got an email from the, our liaisons. Thank you. The liaisons typically wanna meet with the administrator of the department. Uh both of our liaison said, now, when you come to us, you're, you know, you'll have all the detail we need. So um Leanna, does that, does that give you, Madam Chair through you, excuse me, uh does that give you what you need?
Yes, thanks. I'm just trying, the reason why I'm asking is because it seems like there's a lot of, I mean, with every year and we can't obviously predict with the crystal ball what will happen with staffing. We obviously hope that, you know, ideally the I, I guess my concern is with the fifth and sixth grade. Depending on what happens with the number of students and depending on what happens with staffing, that we might need to be flexible or be um sort of prepared to make changes. And that's why I'm, I'm hesitant about like how much flexibility do we have if we have to make any adjustments? That was basically where my concern is.
Um yeah, that's, you know, when you're asking for a four point four to six percent increase. That's a, a, an issue. You have to plan for what you budget if things change. Now, we do, in special education, we do have the circuit breaker. And we will be spending some of that, the, you have to spend the circuit breaker in two years. You can't keep rolling it. So some of this year's expenditures, we pay for by the circuit breaker. And that money will go back to the town if it, if we don't spend it. Um as free cash. Then we have the circuit breaker that we're earning this year. Plus the circuit breaker that we earned last year as available to us next year. So we do have some monies for those and they tend to be the real um unknowns, because as the manager of the school district, I have no input in special education's expenditures. I can't even give my opinion. That's all done by the I U P team and obviously signed off by the parent. So my job is to, is to pay for what the I U P team says is necessary.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing at seven twenty.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Super exciting. I'm sorry, we're running behind schedule.
Congratulations.
Eliana, we were just talking about how talented you were, cause we remember that you won another contest, right? Back in, was it the third grade or second grade?
Yes, yeah, I would say, yeah.
This is Margie Daniels, she's the executive director of M P Y. So uh what we're gonna do is that poster, is we're gonna go back. And when we have our board meeting, she's gonna present all the winning posters. But one of the things that's really cool is the um the art department who made the poster made a second one. So we're gonna give this to you.
So good.
And I
I sure do.
I do too.
The poster would be rather nice.
You, how about getting a, a picture during the meeting?
Whatever you want.
Let's do that. And we're still, we're still live and on camera.
Please.
We do have new members uh joining us as well.
Hello, everyone. Welcome. At seven twenty-four P M. This meeting is called to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Supreme Court for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move one of the new business items up to the beginning of the meeting to accommodate some gaps. I'd like to move the uh Mass uh in the under new business A A Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth elementary school poster contest award. The next item of business.
I'll second. All in favor?
Who would like to present?
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Uh it's my great pleasure to introduce the executive director of the Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth. Margie Daniels, who has a presentation from uh our organization and I say our because I'm the president of the board. And I have nothing to do with the, the judging.
Thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. Excuse me. Um Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth began in um nineteen eighty-eight, so we've been around for a while. And our mission is prevention and intervention in matters of health and safety for you. And since two thousand nine, we've been sponsoring poster and public service announcement. They're really contests. Some board members wanna refer to them just as projects, but they're, you know. We have students who handed, in this case, posters. We have three hundred and twenty-four posters that came in. So you did so well, so well. And the theme this year was, Eric loves you, love it back. We wanted to have offices this year on ecology and on sustainability and the different issues that we're facing as a planet. And the judges really loved your colors in your poster and they were particularly taken with the doves, the dove son. Holding up the, the sign with the, with the title. And so you were selected as an honorable mention out of a really large field of posters. So I really congratulate you also and congratulate Laura, who was advisor on this that submitted. And um just an incredible piece of work. So can I invite you? First of all, I have um a certificate.
How's that?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna take a few, yes.
We can get one with parents in?
The whole family.
Excellent. It work. And there's more.
There's more. And I just wanna tell you about the judges for our project. Uh we have school administrators. We have law enforcement and we have community leaders. So it was a whole group of people that made this decision. It was a tough decision because the posters were just tremendously good. You're very, very talented young lady and
Beautiful.
You guys wanna say about your poster?
And that's okay.
Your art speaks for itself.
Keep that in, Eliana.
And yes, Eliana, I'll keep the poster. Um on March second, I was having an art exhibit at the Nahad Library and I picked two students, who are very great to participate. The artwork celebrates youth, the art month, which is celebrated in March. It's a national um opportunity to celebrate the talents of children across, well, children kindergarten, high school throughout the United States. It's sponsored by the Massachusetts Art Education Association and the National Art Education Association. So I partnered with the library, cause it's sort of like a community um grounding point. And the library agreed and I'll put, Asabi is actually having one of his um skydiver drawings.
That's a trick.
Um in the exhibits, I'll also include Aliana's poster as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And then um Margie will bring the mounted poster to the uh M P Y board meeting in June. And then I'll bring it back. So the school will have it. And then uh we can arm wrestle and you're win. Yeah, the uh, the, the individual who did the mounting did a phenomenal, and the blow up did a phenomenal job.
Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical High School was the other student.
Thank you, Ms. Chaney, for all the things you do with the students. It's really great. The kids are so excited. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, guys. Meeting, so it's way more exciting than what we usually talk about. Good night, everyone.
The library, the library project, I have those, the, the school committee will see those next.
Yeah, it'll just be, I think it'll be great for the
Absolutely. What Laura and I and Madam Chair were just talking about is our students' artwork is being displayed in the Nahad Public Library. Uh and I'm gonna bring those to you next meeting. Okay, I believe it's the month of March they're being displayed.
Madam Chair, I didn't have an opportunity to share with you who is on the call tonight.
Yes, please.
We have uh Robyn's iPhone. I think it's Robin Howard. Uh we also have Allison Nieto from uh Nahad Town Hall. And we have uh Nancy Cadjado, preschool teacher.
Well, hello, everyone and welcome. So I know we're jumping around a little bit, but we are at the meeting and approval of the minutes dated January twenty fourth. Does anyone have any comments? And if not, would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Twenty twenty-three. And I'll second. All in favor?
Thank you. And we have just acknowledged our visitors. Hello. Do we have any correspondence and or community in, has anyone received it?
I haven't received any correspondence. It's lost, fading.
I have not.
I am not.
I have not.
I have no.
What kind of Valentine's Day is this?
Okay, I don't think there's any comments in the chat. I, I don't see any this far away. But let's just make sure.
Not at this time.
I, I'm happy to tell you if there's any.
Thank you. Well, if there's no one wanting to speak, we can move on to the super, the examination and authorization for the payment of bills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um because of our busy pre-meeting schedule. Uh I wanna make sure that we get the, all of the bill roll signed. And um it's pretty typical. We have our special education, town of Swamp Scott is special education. We have our food service coming out of our um revolving accounts. And uh we have a Healy Bus invoice. And we have some plumbing bills, if you remember. The one thing I do wanna uh point out is there's a five hundred seventeen dollar and eighty-two cent bill for a Monte. That is part of a um an insurance claim. So the person who looks at that, you'll see that there's a blank when it comes to which account that is gonna be paid from. Because the um finance director of the town will fill that in. And the total is one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. And Madam Chair, I respectfully ask a member of the school committee to make a motion to approve that expenditure uh for the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three bill roll.
I'll make a motion with the uh bills need amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-seven cents on February fourteenth.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
I, 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 I.
I think same, because I think there may be an invoice.
I just came across one.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I may?
You can go in favor and I'm staying from the one I know.
That's right.
I'm gonna go in favor and abstain for the invoice from engaging.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And then uh anyone else on the school committee can sign that one except for Leanna. And she couldn't sign it anyway, cause that, that would be a presented electronic difficulty.
Thank you. So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh COVID nineteen, we progress as typical. Kids are coming in, kids are going out. Um all symptomatic responses. And we uh in the town, um it's pretty, pretty much us status quo. Um not much to, to report on. Uh we have pretty good attendance and uh the students who are sick, um it's a variety of things, like there's a stomach thing going around right now. Um so it's, it's not COVID based. Uh it's, it's basically winter stock. It's, it's basically winter stock. Okay. Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll defer to Mr. Andrews for the principal's report.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to present that. We are moving right along here to this here. And I can let you know about the band update. We do have ten students enrolled. We now had actually fifteen lessons and three band meetings held since I typed up this report. So they're off and rolling and Mr. Bullock is enthusiastic as are the students. Looking forward to presenting their musical skills and also taking part in the Memorial Day Parade later in the year.
Oh, that's excellent.
Yep. Yep. We have a lot of horn, we have a big horn section, clarinets, flutes, things that'll be great in a parade. So looking forward to hearing that happen and seeing that happen. Our after-school enrichment program is also off and running. We have fifty-seven students enrolled.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, it's, it's really wonderful. They're enjoying it. We had twenty-two today taking part in some mindful movement in the gymnasium. We also have art from the heart and we have CrossFit thanks to the P, thanks to the PTO. Our summer enrichment program enrollment is ongoing. We currently have eighteen students enrolled. And we have three staff members interested in working the program for the summer. So I think we're in a good position to support the program when it starts on July tenth. But we haven't made decisions about hiring for that program yet. We're still enrolling and I'll meet the superintendent and discuss applicants and our next steps for finalizing the details on that. But the dates are set, the times are set, and we have enrollment. So that's wonderful. And that's open for all students who've graduated, who finished grades K to six. Want to let you know that we have just completed what's called an IXL snapshot. This is a way to assess student learning in math and ELA. And we discussed it today at our staff meeting. And it's really a nice way to see what categories of math students need to progress in more than others. I'm going to be working with some students specifically on practicing their skills after school. It breaks it down into geometry, algebra, and so forth. And it, it breaks down those areas and then tells you how strong you are in each of those standards. So you can really do that differentiation that Superintendent Parentozzi was talking about. And related to that, that's one way that we use technology to really enhance the differentiation. Doing a whole group lesson on a topic, then having students practice on that topic independently. In the snapshot, the students have a diagnostic where they're practicing. The computer says, oh, you got that one wrong? Let me give you this one. It's a little bit easier. Okay, great. Let me see if you get another one like that right. And then they give you flags if you're going too quickly. And so it's really the computer can customize it along with the teacher. And I could see in a classroom with mixed grades, having a whole group instruction and independent practice happening simultaneously and then a flip. So that's how I could see that happening. And that's how I could see IXL supporting it. As I'm sure you're aware, we've had, we had a wonderful week in January twenty-third and twenty-seventh. Creating wonderful murals on the way to the cafeteria and in the library. They really are immersive murals. They change the spaces. And they really, I think, enhance the school. And I want to again say thank you to the education foundation for supporting that, all its students and teachers for taking part in it. And for the artist, Tis Van de Blee, who really came out and made it happen. That was wonderful. I want to let you know that on January thirty-first, we had a staff lockdown drill. That was for the staff members to review the procedures for lockdown, in the event that we had to have a lockdown. And we did that in coordination with Nahad Police Department. It came out. We all went through our procedures, talked about what they were. We went into our spaces. Practice locking our doors. And I will say that I, I did talk to a couple of staff members who were moved by the event, by the practice. We didn't have any you know, blank spired or we weren't role-playing. We aren't doing anything very dramatic. But just because I think of the frequency that we see in the news and thinking about the possibility of it happening, I think it's impactful. And I think we want to keep that in mind when we think about, you know, how we do that as a school. I think it's important for the adults to be familiar with their routine and the practice and the drill. But it's different than if I drill.
Yeah.
And, and so we, we went through it. We had, we had a good, I had a good, successful drill. And I want to thank the Nahad Police Department for that.
And just to, we've talked upon this before with that type of recognition and realization about traumatic events is that I, I'm reminded of you saying that the staff has support externally to contact like employee employee assistant, you know, to, to kind of deal with that type of stuff.
We sure do. MIAA, who's available for counseling and for, for discussion.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm glad you asked me because it reminds me to remind the staff of what resources we have available, just from mental health.
Right.
We had a wonderful turnout for the preschool and kindergarten open house. As the superintendent referenced, we have twenty-five students enrolled in preschool who are eligible. I provided you the charts for you that I, one of the slides that I shared at our open house. And this shows you that we currently, the first row is enrollment. The second row is kids in Nahad next year. And so the first row has, we, we have eleven students in our preschool. We have twenty-five students, I mean, eleven three-year-olds in our preschool, twenty-five four-year-olds in our preschool, and twenty-five-year-olds in our kindergarten. So that tells you what I, what we currently are looking at in our school. In the coming school year, who will be in Nahad? What ages will be in Nahad? And so we have, will have eighteen students eligible for preschool in the coming school year. We have, I'm sorry, three-year-olds eligible for preschool in the coming school year. We have twenty-three students who will be four years old in Nahad in the coming school year. And we have thirty-two students who will be eligible for kindergarten in the coming school year. I also ran the numbers on what percentage of threes, fours, and fives show up to those grades?
Oh, yeah, typically.
Typically, right. Because you get smaller numbers of three-year-olds and you get four-year-olds and, and small, and, and and then smaller numbers of four-year-olds and five-year-olds.
Yeah.
And so it typically goes something like fifty-two percent three-year-olds, sixty-something percent four-year-olds, and eighty-five percent five-year-olds. And so you, you can see that progression. So as, as the superintendent mentioned earlier, we are looking at, if it's typical, we are looking at a kindergarten class of, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine students, you know, is, is what we expect if it's, goes by what we've had in the past.
That's great.
And, and it looks like we would likely have two preschools again, two preschool classes again. And they'll be a little bit small. They, I would predict they'd be a little bit smaller than they are this year. But more than, you know, twenty-eight students.
Yeah.
Well, how many kids are in kindergarten right now?
Twenty.
Okay. Because this says that there could be fifty-seven kindergartners.
No, it's not next year. It's this year and next year.
No, I know. But if there's this year, there's twenty. This year, there's twenty-five four-year-olds that will be in kindergarten, right?
That's this year's preschool.
Right. And they'll go to kindergarten.
So now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Twenty-five preschoolers will go to kindergarten this year. And then out there in the world, there's going to be thirty-two.
I don't think that's.
No, oh, sorry. I was.
It's included.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So thirty-two total.
Yeah.
Right.
They were.
It's the twenty-five plus seven.
Yeah. All right. Right. And then you said that there might be six-ish more.
That's, that's how you get to thirty-two.
Exactly. Okay. So thirty-two, so about fifteen or sixteen per class if you did too. Okay. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Yeah.
It hasn't going to crazy places. Everyone's gonna.
It's tricky to do these, you know, year-to-year comparisons. So that's why I was, you know, so that's what we're looking at right now. And of course, the two preschool teachers are interested to know if they'll each have a class next year.
Yeah.
And so I just shared, you know, we don't know what people will select as parents, but you know, it, it looks likely. I don't know if it would have two preschools. We had our hundred day of school recently and students enjoyed dressing up as if they were a hundred years old. And we also did a lot of projects around the school about, you know, what does a hundred look like? What does it mean to, to have a hundred items? And primarily, that was in the lower grades that were sharing that information. And I think that went off well. And that was spearheaded by the student council. And Riley Evans took the lead on that. And it was, it was a fun event. And then we have our, I put upcoming events. I put today's Valentine's Day tea that actually went off today, without a hitch. It was wonderful, a longstanding tradition. In the second grade, many visitors came out, students shared poetry, music. Mr. Bullock played the piano. And then they got together and shared crafts and enacted civilly at tables. Lovely.
Yeah.
As I've spoken before, we have evening conferences coming up. I've shared with the staff today about how this will look. We have an early release date that we'll be using on March sixteenth for conferences. And that is a Thursday.
Yes.
Thursday. And so then report cards, so you, if you go to that conference, you may get your report card on Thursday, a draft, but it should be accurate. Friday, all the report cards are going home, final copy in the backpacks.
Okay.
And then Monday is another evening of conferences. We really wanted to see how can we get, you know, some daytime and some evenings and enough minutes so that our two hours weren't divided amongst twenties students.
Yeah.
So we, we'll have at least fifteen minutes, as many as thirty minutes per student, based on the number of minutes total. And that was with some creative scheduling and organizing of the calendar and the minutes that staff are here for professional development.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Oh, and I, I didn't, I failed to mention that Superintendent Taussi did include in your packet some of the wonderful photographs, if you haven't seen it in person.
Oh, yeah, the mural.
Of the murals. I think they look fantastic. They look even more amazing in person and in color.
And the school committee members got the.
Yeah, the digital.
The digital, which are.
Right. And I also shared with you my back-to-school information. I remember in previous evenings, as school committee members had mentioned, it'd be helpful to have the dates of when school starts, how to contact folks, things like that. So I really put some time into giving everybody the dates for the first day of preschool, the first day of kindergarten, first day of one to six, all the orientations and how to sign up for different activities and childcare options that we have.
Oh, this is so great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, great. Thank you. Yeah, it's a summary of, I, I tried to think, if I'm a new parent, what is everything I really want?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And that will be made available on our website.
It sure will. It sure will. It's all the basics on a two-page, on a one piece of paper, if you do from the back. And how to contact folks, you know, when, when things are happening, when screenings are happening. So just push it out there and got it done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you for your feedback on that, those types of things. And, you know, this is how, so we improve as a school.
Yeah.
Next, who's my report, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Moving back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Andrews, for your lengthy and fascinating and interesting report. It was great. It's really good to get back to normal.
Yeah.
It's wonderful to have the activities in the school again and after-school and parents coming in and participating with us. It's just wonderful. So Madam Chair, I'd like to go to item six C, the telephone system update. Today, there was a workman here almost all day getting our phones as close to what we want as possible. And, and I think we may be all set. So if that's the case, you may be seeing a very large invoice at the next meeting. I put a hot-off-the-press item in front of you while the principal was speaking. And this is an update. And I circled the fact that at three-eleven today, I got the rejected estimate from our low bidder. So I want you to know that I am about to ask you to authorize me to sign a contract. And it's, and the, the fourth page on this gives you the number. Fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for our new cafeteria HVAC system. The first page gives you the, the fact that I just got this at three-eleven today. The next page and the, and the one after that is an exchange between the town finance director and me. So basically, I said to Ms. Nieto, hey, this just came in. But I'm not sure we have the funds to cover it because we're in the middle of the fiscal twenty-three. I certainly didn't budget for our HVAC system to fall apart. So what do you want me to do? What you'll see is her answer was, I think you should proceed with the project, pay the invoice from your budget. And if we run into an issue towards the end of the year, we can look at savings and other accounts or even a reserve fund transfer. To which, you know how conservative I am, I reply, okay, I'm planning to review the budget next week. I'll have a better idea if we have the funds then. This is summer work, so a week's delay won't matter. However, I would like you to authorize me to sign this tonight if I'm comfortable signing it. Obviously, the finance director is already comfortable with me signing it. And since she is in charge of all the finances of the town, that should give you some confidence that we'll be fine. I do want to sign this on Thursday. I would, I do want to send this to them on Thursday so they can book it, so they can, or the machinery. By the way, the machinery is fifteen pages of description. And I have it with me if you're interested in fifteen-page description of an HVAC unit. But I didn't copy that for you.
No, that's okay.
I, I figured it would be so.
Daddy really wants to read it.
Would anyone like to make a motion? And so am I making a motion to approve the.
Authorize me to sign.
Sign it. All right. I'll make a motion to authorize Superintendent Parentozzi to sign the contract for the cafeteria rooftop gas heating repair.
I'll second that motion.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cafeteria ceiling fans is a fascinating story. As you know, this summer, we spent a considerable amount of money for monstrous fans which, when we needed them, when the HVAC system went down, stopped working. So what we had is, we had the HVAC system not functioning. We had the electric box heaters on the floor. So the, and we had no fans working, so the heat would rise. And then we didn't have the ceiling fans to push it back down to where the human beings are. And then, of course, I got a bill from the installer who didn't fix them. And I got a bill. So I called and I said, they're not working. We don't pay bills when they're not working. So that's the bad news. The good news is new fuses fixed the fans. What they were doing is they were, they're in addition to the breakers that we all have in our house, these fans have boxes on the wall with, with special fuses in them. And we were replacing them, they were replacing them with a, a light gauge fuse that as soon as the fans started up, they would blow again. But now we have the right fuses in them and we have extras, so they're working. And that's why with the electric heat in that really cold weather, we were able to keep the temperature in the cafeteria reasonable. Today, I worked in there, I turned the, the box heaters off. It was seventy-three degrees. So, so we're going to be able to limp through until we get the new HVAC system.
We're lucky it's been a warm winter.
Except for what, forty? Except for what, forty hours?
Alright.
Well, that's Friday. Uh the personnel update, Madam Chair, item six D is personnel is is excellent. Uh everyone is working that and on staff, people have been uh uh doing a great job. Uh Mr. Andrews mentioned, I, the only thing I was gonna mention was the summer postings uh which he already did, so I'm not gonna repeat that.
And we've had consistent staffing. I mean, we have through the season, so.
Um I I don't know if this is appropriate time to bring up the employee satisfaction survey. I didn't, or should we talk about it in old business?
No, Madam Chair, I think it's fine bringing it up now.
Thank you.
We were ready to put that out and the union sent in thirty-two items, new items. And we wanna have a meeting at Labor Management Committee. Some of the items, I think, are appropriate. Some of the items are out of the lane of the NTA uh in terms of finding an opinion about something that doesn't have anything to do with their work. Uh and there are multiples that I think are repeats, just expressed in different language. So we wanna have a sit-down with them at our next labor management, but uh we were ready to go forward with it.
Yeah, I had I had a Google Doc that I shared with NTA and then they edited that and I accepted it, actually, all the changes. And then there was a Word doc that came after that that had additional thirty questions and it added up to sixty-five questions. And surveys aren't simple. You know, you wanna make sure you're you're you know what your goal is. Uh and so I, it just will take a long time to, and and I didn't wanna put anything up. With Mr. Parentozzi, I didn't wanna put any questions aside outright. You know, if they have a question, we wanna discuss what the question is and um and add it or not. Um and so that's why it's gonna, it will take a little bit more time.
Cause you know, right now, where as we sit, we're in February and
Yep.
Um you know, so uh would it, could, if if the school committee agrees, could we see the survey ourselves to assist in the evaluation of the questions?
I mean, typically, I mean, it's a labor management issue.
So the survey is a labor management?
Sure. It is a, it would be an administrative request to get input from the union members.
And so we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have access to that. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding.
I mean, typically not. I mean, I don't have a problem with you saying it. I'm just, let me, let me mention it to the union members.
Okay.
It's more, i- i- the new questions came in such a draft format, um it it's it's kinda, it's a little bit onerous at this point because there's you know, multiple questions that are asking the same question, things that aren't about uh job satisfaction. Um you know, so it just seems see, see, it was, it was surprising. It was just surprising the way that, you know, came out.
If we had input for you, thinking about just over the last year or so, some of the um occasionally and not often, uh folks have reached out and just mentioned, you know, some things. If we, if we had ideas on a survey question that might be able to elicit more voices weighing in on a subject, we could turn those into you too, right? If we had ideas on like a like a bucket area, and then you could evaluate that as you're evaluating with the rest. What would be, what do you think would be a good, and not too long, because like you know, I found my own teachers, like, give me a survey. People are not gonna spend the time on it, and if we wanna get out, you know, some good thoughtful responses, then we have to make sure it's not a nobody, but we could put our own thoughts into the pile and then you will create something out of whatever the um the NTA is suggesting and what we might suggest and others that you might be getting input from. Could we do that?
Absolutely. Let let me be clear about my response before. If the NTA has no issue with you saying it before, it's done, I don't have, we don't have an issue.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure they don't.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
And if any of you have any input for either Kevin or I, please give it to us.
Yeah.
One of the things we did, it got so cumbersome. One of the things we did is we organized the questions by topic. By category, which it wasn't before, so that really changed it really changed the survey.
Now, now that I've, yeah, and so I I categorized the questions, will meet to look at these. You know, I had some questions that were the same as their questions that I felt were the same.
Yeah.
And I wanna make sure that, you know, we're clear about what we're hoping to get out of the survey. Why are people happy here, or what are the some things that we could do better? You know, that's the goal.
Let me really give my prejudice. In a survey, the number one mistake that's made, and I've done dozens of them, is people wanna tell you what they are concerned about that someone else is responsible for. And that's typical, right? But what we wanna survey to to be is how people are feeling about how their experience is. And it's hard to separate those two because you don't wanna say, um I'll give you an example. Tony Parentozzi doesn't have anything to do with driving a school bus. But if the question is, are you concerned about school bus safety? And I answer yes, what do we do with that? So, you know, we're trying to figure out how to get people to say, how to ask questions that get people to respond in the areas that they're associated with, rather than it's all about everybody else. And there will be some about other people.
Yeah.
You know, does the administration do A, B, or C? Of course. But when every question is about somebody else and nothing about the individual taking the survey, then you're missing an opportunity.
I I hear that, and I also, you know, wanna make sure that there is an open there's commentary for response because not everything is answered in a simple yes or no question. Um you know, we have surveyed, you know, per- personally and um you know, there there are definitely things that need explanation, so I guess, you know, I wanna just make sure that
There is a comment section.
Yep.
For for each question.
But with, if you if you can imagine, though, uh twelve categories? So you got twelve categories, but a comment section on after each one. And, you know, you're talking about a mountain of data.
Well.
And we're trying to get it so that it's
Quantitative.
Quantitative and less onerous. That's all.
Yeah, and I mean, you can do that with the simple responses and then collecting the data from the comments. You know, so you do have that quantitative and those yes, no. And then please, you know, you have explain, right? So you're able to do that. Um but I, you know, if there are things that people are concerned about that aren't applicable to their their own job, that they feel strongly enough that it want, they want it to be put in a survey, you know, isn't that saying something about a process or that process?
I hope I was clear because what what I'm hearing you say is that we only want what you just said. That's, but and that's not the case. What I don't want is a survey that only says, everybody else has a problem and I'm not making it myself.
It's not yes or, is it yes or no, or is it a like?
It's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. And then there is a place for qualitative like feedback.
Absolutely.
After each session, okay, cause I do
Like I say. I don't, I don't wanna share certain the conversation, but um we'd be happy to share it with you if it's okay with the NTA.
Alright, we could email you the draft, you know, of of all the questions. And what I've done right now is I have questions that I said, these are the questions I found online. And then I have a different color for the questions that the teachers suggested.
Oh, that would be perfect.
And uh
Yeah.
And you can see, you know, you can just see what we're working with and
Yeah.
Uh we wanna, I think, make sure it's a survey that's gonna we, it's gonna do what we, you know, what the whole school wants it to do, you know.
The whole school.
And not just be um a whole bunch of questions that we, you know, you have to also think about what's the end goal.
Yes.
What do I wanna do with this information?
Yeah, it's it's the tough, you know, you wanna make sure you have that and then also make sure that you're capturing the collective thought and concern and um satisfaction of
Survey is, I think, I mean, that was my understanding
Yeah.
We're going for not a, um how's everything in the school? You know, how's the food?
Right, no, 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 yeah.
You know.
Yeah, what's applicable to their support system.
That's what I, that's what I'm thinking. And we got, we got some questions
Yes, sorry.
That were a little bit more just kind of wide.
Okay.
Ranging.
Yeah. The other view that we do not have as an administration at this time and the reason we wish to have a dialogue is we don't wanna survey that everyone's taking to reflect one person's thirty-two questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And nobody else's. And that's a, that's a subtlety that has to be talked about.
Yeah. So if it's supposed to be anonymous and like, how are you I guess, just thinking about like how you generate the questions and who generated the questions, like you know, is it more or less like a you know, is this the question, like, are, is the communication gonna be like, oh, is the questions from most of the staff here? Is this the concern of most of the staff, but you're not singling out who was asking the question?
That's right.
Okay.
In other words, then, you know, you just turned in thirty X questions.
Yeah.
Can you give me an idea of how many staff members inputted into those thirty questions? Yeah, and um if it's one or two people, okay, that gives us information. That doesn't mean the question is invalid. It it just means, do we need to give more time to the other people to have more input, or will the survey do that? And I don't, I don't, you know, we're we're sitting here kind of scratching our heads.
But like, if you're, if you're clear on the why, like, it feels like this all came about to try to get a sense of how the, it's a staff survey. It's not a whole community survey. It's for staff. So you're trying to get a sense of two things. One is the staff, how they feel about their experience in their role at whatever it is, as a staff member of the Johnson School, right? Um and input and feedback on what might make that experience stronger, better, et cetera, right? Like, and and that could be, and that will include what's going really well, right? And what um could be a great opportunity, right? And then I think you're gonna take all of this input and use it, and it's it's gonna then go through your own funnel, right? Which means that you get rid of other people's sort of specific interests so that it's around. I imagine the buckets are like, what is your experience with coaching and um and uh supervision, you know, here at the Johnson School? What is your experience with professional development? Um how are you, what's your experience with classroom culture, school culture, staff culture? You know, like, there'll be these buckets, right? What is your experience with operations? Do things happen, you know, um as you need them to, to be able to do your job as a teacher, as a support person, as the nurse, whatever it is? And I think that way, if you have that lens, then the like, let's say, like whoever the person is that developed the thirty-two questions happens to have been a longstanding custodian in a system, right? And all the the lens, it's not that we don't wanna hear from the custodian do, but like you'd have to translate some of those questions if they were so specific to whatever that role is that that person's coming in with, you know? Um and so I think, I think what, you know, if you're clear about the buckets and you're clear about what you wanna know and what you feel, when you intuit, like, teachers and others wanna tell you, then I think you're gonna end up with a good survey. And this will be fine.
Yeah.
And I say that not having seen uh you know, this and not having as much experience with the um kind of the operations of a, like an NTA type of um body.
I'm sorry, and I know that this has been answered. It's a teacher survey, not a staff.
Oh, well, that that was another question.
Yeah, we're not even sure of that, which is why we need a dialogue, because we are of the opinion that paraprofessionals had a a lot of input into the questions and
Because we discussed it at a previous meeting, and my understanding is that it was a teacher survey that you were putting out. Um but I'm hearing the phrase staff survey a lot, and I don't, I mean, I think it would be great to hear from all of the staff, but there might be different questions for the two groups. I don't know.
And I have to say it, well, if you don't mind me, Madam Chair, uh I think that it originated because we were wondering about teacher turnover.
Yeah.
And that's a much different question than staff and paraprofessional turnover because it's just, it's just, it's just, they're different roles and they're different, they're different to fill. Um and so I I think, I think that's a great question, and I I think we should identify, are we thinking about, you know, staff turnover, teacher turnover, paraprofessional turnover, filling the positions is much different?
Yeah, yeah.
So I can tell you that, and this is just from my own experience, we get a staff satisfaction survey that goes to our entire hospital that applies to doctors, PAs, nurse practitioners, nurses, administrative staff, the you know, the custodial staff. It is a, and I know that that's a huge organization and it's immensely overwhelming to
Survey in high school.
But but well, I mean, it was immense, it's really long.
Okay.
Leana can speak to this, it's very long, but um it, you know, and it's I'm sure they pay a lot of money to get people to ask the questions so that it's about um the environment. I I wonder if there is a way that the general questions can be used to address staff satisfaction and maybe that can be brought up, so it's not questions that are specific to the, to paraprofessionals or specific to the teachers, because it would be great to hear the nurses' satisfaction, like, I mean, at all, the s- the staff, the environment.
Yeah.
But if that is completely overwhelming to because it's you, right? It's not, it's not, it's not a um, it's not a company that is making that.
That's right.
Um you know, maybe it it seems too difficult to meet in the middle and address all of it. Maybe we could do a follow-up survey with similar questions for the rest of the staff. I don't know.
Or you could ask the questions, I'm a fan of it being a staff survey, A, it's, it reads a certain, they could add some more anonymity, right? You could also have a question that's like, am I a teacher or am I not? But teachers and non-teachers, you have enough here, right? Then I think it's protective of anonymity. And um it will also still, like, lots of people probably have feedback that would be useful to you about the environment, is what you're saying. And you could start there. Then if it feels, when you break it down, the teachers, let's say, the teacher piece, as you cut it just for teachers, elicit some things that you wanna know more about. There are lots of ways of getting, you could do a focus group, you could do a listening circle, you could do another survey of just teachers at the end of the year. You know, there's all kinds of things you can do. Um but it feels like that's a good place to start.
But you're not suggesting that it's two separate surveys. You're suggesting one.
One survey. Yeah, one district, you get the questions as right as you can and you press go.
Yeah.
And then you
Yeah. The 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 real problem we're having is, we don't have a psychometric specialist
No.
So let me give you an e- an example of the issue. One of the questions suggested was, quote, I have concerns about safety at recess. I mean, anybody who would ask, answer no to that means they don't care if people get hurt. It's not
But they're not expecting you to ask it in that way. You can't ask a survey question that way.
That's why we're, and that's why you don't have anything, because we need to ask if you're, if there are concerns, but we need to ask it in a way that the answer means, you know, we can do something with it.
Right.
One hundred percent of us have concern about safety at recess, of course.
Right.
So
But you could ask a safety and school-related question and then So the person who's very concerned about safety.
I just gave you that as an example of of what started Kevin and I, like, wait a minute, we have to figure out what to ask here.
We didn't wanna just go slicing through it and saying, that doesn't make sense. We didn't wanna just go slicing through it and saying, that doesn't make sense.
And put it in a way that, yeah.
Yeah, so it's going back to committee.
All right, I think we need to put a timeline on this, because like I said, it's February. Mid-month, like, we started talking about this in September.
Really?
That's what I remembered, but I wasn't quite sure, and you know, I, I think it's important for. I don't wanna speak for everybody else, but you know, we've been, we have been talking about this to get it, to get it done, right?
Well, then, Madam Chair, respectfully, I suggest that we hire somebody to do it, because we have full-time jobs.
Yeah.
And I'm a part-time person with a full-time job. Uh, I, I mean, and we meet with the union once a month.
Okay.
In labor management, and it takes time.
And they have to improve it, and before it goes up.
It's, it's. Surveys are a labor management issue.
All right.
So are you saying that if we have an expectation for a timeline that we cannot get it out?
I'm saying it's an unknown. That's, and you know me, I'm, I'm straightforward, it's, it's an unknown, I don't know. We, we were ready, and then you get thirty questions.
And then when you get to whatever your final version is, right? Can you just go with that, or do you have to put it in front of the NTA again?
Well, that's why I wanted to have a, a labor management dialogue, and hopefully we can work through.
Right.
And, and have a product.
So.
But if they wanna bring it back to their association meeting. Then it's not one month, it's two months.
Yeah.
Which is what's been happening, it's not because we haven't been working on it.
Yeah, could be a question, a survey that Tony, you know, the administrative puts out to staff. Um, of course, then, you know, we don't have the other side that we're talking about.
I just think the teachers probably, um, and staff would probably be kind of. I imagine that they. I've never met a staff member in a public school that did not wanna give some input. And um, and so I imagine they would want this to come out, so would there, would they put pressure on? Their representation to get this done, so that we can get it out, you think? I'm in, I'm a rookie here in this land.
I. I have no way of knowing what happens at one of their meetings, nor their input. From the spectrum of, oh, wow, I can't wait to give input to, is this something now, one more thing I have to do? It's some, you know, more than likely, it's somewhere in the middle.
And it's not mandatory, right? You don't wanna fill it, so you don't have to, right?
Right, yeah.
You can be made to do it, of course.
I mean, I can, I can see both sides of it, like, obviously, we want the information in a timely manner. I understand why it's taking so long. Um. I don't. I don't know if there's. A way to speed up the process. Um.
They had a deadline of January ninth to get. Teachers' information back to the NTA.
Yeah.
And.
So this is clearly past that deadline.
So that, that deadline, it came and went, we got. The feedback, and then I gave it to, then I put it in. And then I gave it to the NTA, and I said, is this what you like? This is what I've gotten, and they said, oh, you didn't get this document. And they didn't email me this whole Word document that had thirty-two more questions on it. And now it's another month, and we looked at the thirty-two questions and said, geez, these, I didn't see any of these before. You want me to put these in there too? Um, I didn't get them on January nine, you know, so that, that's, I mean, that, and I, I gave it to them in December. Right, so, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's just kind of like here of the timeline. We probably talked about it first in November, so I, I probably found it on the internet in November. I found like a hundred questions, dialed, dialed it down to like thirty. Gave it to, you know, gave it to them, you know, so.
So you're meeting with them this week? And. At this meeting, you're looking to resolve the.
Yeah, so I took the thirty-two, and I, I, I categorized them into, I made up six buckets, cuz they were just, you know, all the, you know. And I made them into curriculum design, you know, job satisfaction, general job satisfaction. Student safety, uh, whatever I saw as themes, I tried to categorize them so that we could. Tackle the, you know, now fifty-seven questions that we have. Um, and we noticed that a lot of them were similar. Uh, I told the, the president, I don't wanna just cut to myself.
Um. Do you have a suggested? Um. You know, consolidation, yeah.
Well, I, I, right now, what I've done is I just categorized them.
Okay.
And so that's my suggested categorization, in my cutting is just. You know, talking to the president and saying, we have six about this topic, they look very similar to me. Which one is the word, you know, then you have wording to talk about, so it, I mean.
So you think that this process is gonna be longer than Thursday?
Yeah, we won't get it done on Thursday, you know, we won't get it done in an hour.
To, to resolve the question.
But you won't be able to get to a place on Thursday that just says, okay, this is generally what we want, right, get it out, yeah, you know.
Oh, I, I don't know, that's, I mean, that's not my expectation, it probably took me an hour to put them into buckets.
Um. Do you share it with them ahead of time, so they can review it?
Well, that's right, in December, as I shared with the original.
Know what you did with the buckets.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have it, they have it, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they have it as a Google Doc again. I mean, I was hoping they would put it, I, you know, I put it in Google Doc first, so they could make comments about it, they could add their own questions, but instead. They came back and made a Word document, and then didn't send it to me. So, I mean, and that's what happened, I looked on my email, looked in my trash, I was like, I don't have this Word document, I don't know what I'm talking about. So. And it was a Word document, I never.
So then if you, you're not comfortable giving a timeline for the completion of it, then let's keep it on the agenda. Um, so that we can continue to address what's going on.
Yep.
Yeah, no, absolutely, if there's anything that we can do that helps.
Yeah. Thanks for all your work.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Well, the obvious thing is, if anybody has one, I mean, if you have one.
A staff survey?
I, I mean, I, I probably do.
Yeah, the one I found had, you know, I found a couple of different ones, you know, they were, they weren't none of the word ideal, and then we checked, we actually even charted it into a. Google form, right, then we got the Word doc back.
Yeah.
I was ready to go, I mean, I was, I was pretty good with it. Cuz we had, you know, we had to turn it into a Google Doc, so that the metrics could be, boom, boom, boom.
Yeah.
You know? So.
I think we all do in our own way, you know, have. Yeah. Surveys that we could probably consolidate. I have no clue how to get my survey, because it's like.
Yeah, you're.
Online.
I'll have mine by tomorrow.
The hospital one sounds pretty imposing.
Mine isn't gonna be as fancy as that.
Yeah, good.
Something worth it.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, well, so we'll keep it on the agenda. Keep on keeping on.
And we'll find out if, um, if you mind me saying, we'll find out if, um, they're comfortable with us sharing the draft.
Yes, yes, that would be great, yeah. Thank you. Okay. So. Are we done with the personnel update?
Uh, Madam Chair, we're up to old business, right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I respectfully, uh, what I put in the packet is. The timeline. So you could see that we are meeting with the finance committee. And I believe that's the chair and myself. On March second. And this is the last school committee meeting prior to March second. So, Madam Chair, I respectfully ask a member of the school committee to give every consideration to a motion to approve. The superintendent's budget. And to accept it as the school committee budget.
May I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's budget. For FY twenty-four. And make it the school committee's budget.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
And would anyone else like to attend this meeting?
I'm, I might try to, did you, what did you say, what time it was at?
March second at.
Six thirty?
Six thirty, I believe.
It is six, it is six thirty on March second.
Okay, I'm gonna try to.
Yes. That's what the minutes are from last time. So moving on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um. The next item on the agenda is the out-of-district transportation contract. In your packet, you have an agreement between the district and the SEAM collaborative. In my pile, I have twenty-two pages of detail. Which, once again, I have saved you from.
Thank you.
But, um, as you know, we went out for a bid, we got two bids back, the, um. SEAM collaborative. Is the least expensive. Out-of-district special education transportation of costs. Uh, they are slightly above what we are paying, uh, this year. As compared to dramatically above what we are paying this year. The, uh, the next lowest. As an example, then, the, um, the other bid wanted two hundred and ninety-five dollars. For a, uh, seven-passenger van. Per day, and the, uh, monitor cost was a hundred and eighty dollars per day. So, uh, once again, I respectfully, uh, ask a member of the school committee to authorize me to sign. The SEAM agreement. For out-of-district transportation. The, uh, good news is. That the, uh, NRT bus company. Our current bus company provides the SEAM collaborative with the transportation, so there basically will be no difference. Other than we will have the SEAM collaborative as the cons. A consolidator. For us. In the future, so when the SEAM collaborative negotiates with NRT. Will be part of that negotiation for the, um, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Uh, I'll make a motion to authorize Superintendent Penn Tossi to sign the contract for out-of-district. Transportation with the SEAM collaborative. And I'll second. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, in your packet, you have the, uh, summer programs. There is the. Island Roots. Program, which will hit the streets tomorrow. And the. Summer enrichment program, which is already out. And we have, I believe, eighteen parents and guardians signed up for that. And as a reminder, uh, a parent guardian can sign up for both. So they can go to our program in the morning and on Island Roots, or they can go to Island Roots all day and not come to our birth. Okay? So we're way ahead of last year's game.
Yeah.
Okay. The middle school bus. Issue follow-up, which is seven D. Um. I identified the students of concern. Communicated that to the administration of the Swamp Scott Middle School. Who, in writing, stated to me that they would address it without identifying the parent and or students. Um. As I reported before, I've been seeking a way to find a monitor without success. Uh, I've asked parents. I've asked the parent who had concerns to com- to communicate with me instantly. If an issue occurs on the bus, so that I can go directly to the bus company and get the. Cameras recording. Because right now, it's. I don't know when, I don't know why, I don't know what to look for. But if there is an incident on that bus, I will go, we will go directly to the bus company. It happened, uh, at approximately. You know, three fifteen on Wednesday, on this date, could you please look at the camera to see what was going on? I reiterated my question to the bus company, what do you see going on on the bus? The. Bus driver, and I wanna reiterate again my statement, no Healy buses have monitors.
Yeah, so elaborate on that, so my understanding is that the middle school buses, so they don't use Healy buses.
Use Healy buses, I said it.
Yeah. And I guess my follow-up question to that is, is the bus monitor for the bus company of the, that Swamp Scott uses. Um, hired by the bus company, or is it hired by the town of Swamp Scott?
Typically, the bus company.
And, and when you say.
Because it's part of the contract, if you remember, when I show you the contracts, it says monitor cost per day.
Then those team one has the monitor on them.
Which is special education.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't remember, I don't. I don't remember it being on Healy, but probably cuz they don't. Yeah. So there's no, like, avenue to have bus monitors that are not. Provided by the bus.
I asked the administration of the middle school to look into the possibility, if they had anybody who might be interested in riding the bus. And I have not gotten anything back, I'm, I'm really trying.
Are you asking whether Healy will allow, uh, independent bus monitor come on? There's just not a process in place to find these people, other than like posting. Yeah, no, I just wasn't sure if your question was. Oh, I guess it's another question, would Healy allow it, even if we hired someone?
I'd find somebody.
If you find someone, they wouldn't say no?
No.
Okay. Because I recall the issue being like, being, um, that the. Parents or guardians weren't being informed of the. Instances right away, and so it was hard to kind of pinpoint that time, right?
Right.
So, and that's why the monitor was suggested.
I don't know why the monitor was suggested, other than because my investigation has demonstrated to me. Emphatically. That this is not an overt misbehavior.
Yeah, it's subtle, I'm sure.
It's subtle, uh, it was described to me as mean people. You know, you can put a gender on it if you want, mean boys, mean girls. And. You know, it's not kids out of the bus, it's, it's not, it's making a comment to a student. And I don't understand. Having been involved in middle schools for twenty-seven years of my career, I don't understand how a monitor is gonna hear what somebody says. Quietly to someone seven rows back.
Yeah, I mean, to the same point, I don't know that a, um. That a tape would show us much, it would show students talking, and what words are being said.
But if I got a complaint from parent X. I, we could go to the tape and see who was around student X and zero in. On the other hand, I've already zeroed it. I, I communicated to the administration at Swamp Scott Middle School. Who the, uh, concerning students were, are. And it was stated to me that they would, uh, address it, in a manner that would not identify. The other students.
Do you know if that's been addressed?
No, but I will find out.
Um, what about, and what about the Naha police just stepping on the bus? Not that, again, not that I think that a Naha police officer stepping on the bus. And, you know, saying hello to the students. Would solve this problem, but I, I, I think it's a really. You know, they do such a great job with their presence here, and so I don't think it's a solution, but I also don't think it's a bad idea.
Well, I can tell you, one parent sent me an email and said, don't you dare.
Yeah.
Don't you dare what?
Some parents heard that we were talking about the police getting on the middle school bus, and I got a.
Knock on it and ride it.
I got a harsh email. And, um, I responded that, uh. You know me, very honestly, look, I'm trying to identify.
Solution.
Who.
Oh, yeah.
Individually, and the, the, I have not, I asked the police yet, but that's down the road.
Yeah.
About having a police officer step on the bus.
What was the concern about having a police officer step on the bus? Was there a specific concern, or was it just a general, I don't want cops on buses?
I don't want it.
Yeah.
It was very general.
Or, and, yeah, I.
It's inappropriate to have that happen when you're not identifying the misbehaving student type of thing. Which is, by the way, my point of view.
Yeah, yes, I don't think it's a solution to the problem, but because of this problem that was brought up. And I think every once in a while, you know, I, I, I like their presence, I like their presence here, I like it that they walk through the school. I like it that the students know that they're a part of our community, and I don't think it's a terrible idea.
You didn't know what?
And I'm not saying every day or even every week, but once in a while, you know, hey, how's everything going? You know?
I like a, uh, an unannounced walk-in, some people that know what they're doing, I really do.
Yeah.
I, I just believe, I, I have seen things in the last five years. Around bullying, you know, and I personally have an intersection with it, just because my daughter's just been through hell and back with some situations. Um, at the middle school and then in her high school now, which is not Swamp Scott, but. I, um, I just, you know, anything that can kind of control that, just I've seen some things I haven't seen before. And I'm being sort of, yeah, so I, I was a year last, last time for the meeting, so it resisted, but. Um, and I, I don't even know that I'm necessarily saying like, that's the end of the, I just don't think that it's such a. Bad idea, and I think we're gonna walk forth, Tony's doing some stuff now, we'll figure it out, but, um, you know, the bullying makes me nervous.
I also just want to say that the amount that it would cost for a monitor is not small. And I actually don't think it would address this concern. Could it make the students safer to stay in their seats, to not be jumping over seats, to not be throwing things and doing other things? Yes.
And none of that is happening.
Correct, with the specific concern, I actually don't think that a monitor is, is going to fix it.
Yeah, it tends to break as well, yeah.
I'm not saying that we should, if there are other concerns, I'm not saying that we shouldn't spend the money, but it's not gonna.
Yeah, and I think if people in Nahat, anyone, you know, for any child that's under the umbrella of Nahat Public Schools has a problem, they should come, they should reach out to you.
The interesting, Madam Chair, through you, the interesting thing is in your packet, you have the Swamp Scott bus policy.
I was just gonna say there's.
Which is exactly like ours, it says you identify the student. And if they can't behave, they don't ride the bus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. One of the things I wanted to follow up on is in our policy, it does say that this policy is gonna be distributed to the parents and to the students, and I just. Remember discussing that, you know, there wasn't a real way to, for you to do that. Has, has that been resolved so that, you know, families who are using the bus understand this and can review it with their. Student.
I don't know, I'm gonna have to check it to see if there's distributed at the Swamp Scott Middle School.
So one suggestion I can make. Being a parent of a new middle schooler and going through this whole process, is that remember at the beginning of the school year, the bus schedule was distributed? Perfect time to, as an attachment, here is our policy.
Yeah.
I think it's a perfect time.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, because if we're, if it's in our policy that we're doing it, we should be doing it and have a system to do it, you know? Tony, I think if you rode the bus, nothing would happen.
I can assure you that if I rode the bus.
I think you'd be a great person. And all your copious amounts.
I would rely on my twenty-seven years in middle school.
You just have to stare at them.
And, and my, my two years as an assistant principal.
I'm gonna say another person would be a great bus monitor, me.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair, moving on, we've, uh, done eight A, eight B, in your packet, you have the, uh, annual report. I do want to say to members of the school committee. Historically, the principal and the superintendent write the annual report and bring it to the school committee. But I'm open next year, if you want to be involved in writing the annual report in some way, just let me know.
I appreciate that, though, I mean, you know, I mean, I.
Yeah.
I appreciate the offer for that.
Um.
Who does the report go to?
Pardon me?
What is there a report go to?
It goes in the, uh, the book, the annual book.
Oh, nice.
No, the annual report book.
That goes to the town meeting, right?
At the one.
At the one, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is that town meeting?
Yeah.
Well, it gets mailed, I think.
The book?
Yeah.
The book?
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it gets mailed every residence.
It's at the one.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move if, uh, unless there's a comment or a question. I also want to thank, uh, Mr. Andrews, who wrote the first draft of the, uh, annual report. Uh, AC is a non-resident request for students to attend preschool in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, in your packet, you have a letter from Allison Nieto, who is our, uh, the Town of Nahat Finance Director and Town Accountant. You also have copies of the school admissions and the admission of non-resident preschool students policies. The important point, um, that I would like to point out to members of the school committee is in the first paragraph of school admissions, it states. Quote, "All children of school age who reside in the town will be entitled to attend in the hot public schools as. Will certain children who do not reside in the town, but who are admitted under the school committee policies. Relating to non-resident students or by specific action of the school committee." So your policy gives you the authority to accept a non-resident student in your programs. Even though, when we changed this policy. In, uh, two thousand sixteen, we changed it with the intention of it being. Only for Nahat Public School employees, but that doesn't mean it has to be that way.
Well, the thing that comes to mind is that I remember that we, there was a complaint before about. A resident not having, um, asking for the preschool, to attend the preschool, and it was.
It would have been a non-ophice event.
It was a, uh, the relatives of a resident.
That's right.
Right, so, you know, I. Feel like, you know, a resident and somebody who works for the town, like, you know, um, what is? What is the policy of one over the other, and this seems like it would allow both?
When that individual, who I believe was related to someone who did not live in the community, wanted that child to go to. Um.
Preschool.
Preschool.
Yeah.
You determined as a committee not to allow that.
And that person, the parent.
Excuse me, I don't mean you individually, sitting here, the school committee at that time voted not to allow it.
And that person didn't work, the parent did not work full-time for Nahat Public or for Nahat, the city of Nahat.
I don't know that you thought of that, yeah.
And then, were we, I, I don't remember. No, we didn't vote on that, I thought that it was something that was brought up as. Um, like a complaint that, you know, they, it would have benefited them as a resident because they care for these children.
Can I just, um, so, the school admissions, JF, I'm just making sure I'm reading this correctly, so, obviously. Student, uh, children who reside in town. As will children's, children who do not reside in town, but who are admitted under school committee policies relating to non-resident students. Or by specific action of the school committee, because I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, because when I read JFAB. It says, "Students who are children of Nahat Public School employees may be admitted," but I'm reading in JF and just. Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, that's.
Or by specific action of the school committee, because right now, when I'm seeing this, this child doesn't meet the criteria by JFAB. But what I'm reading in JF is that. It could be, we could still admit them under the specific action of the school committee, am I reading that correctly?
Madam Chair, through you, that's my interpretation, I agree.
Yeah, that's my, I just want to make sure, too.
It would not, it would not be under JFAB because they're not an employee of this, of the Nahat Public Schools.
Okay.
However, this individual would be covered under, quote, "A specific action of the school committee," if the school committee so chose.
Okay. Um.
For me, I'm, I'm thinking about space, so next year, that's gonna be, let's say, I didn't do math correctly before, so, you know, watch me now. But, we're gonna, we're, we know twenty-three four-year-olds in preschool next year. And you're, and we're gonna hire two people, right?
But it's not just four-year-olds that'll be in preschool, it'll be three, or is that?
I guess, I guess, that, I mean, I have some question, that's, do we have a concern about space?
Yes. That we'd be capping out and not allowing a Nahat resident to enroll in preschool.
Right.
Because a non-resident has been admitted.
We usually get about sixty percent of the three-year-olds.
Okay. I'm, okay, and, I mean, I guess.
I don't know, I mean, of course, she was another's teacher sometimes, I.
That's, Madam Chair, I can address that.
Yes.
If the school committee wishes this to happen and votes for it to happen. I. Absolutely will impose the conditions under JFAB to this person. Which says. That.
Class overcrowding.
Non-resident students may be denied admission for reasons of class overcrowding.
Okay.
Except once admitted, would not be subject to dismissal for reasons of overcrowding.
So what I'm reading there, yeah, is that if we decide to allow them, they wouldn't be. Uh, that wouldn't be undone based upon our enrollment.
Right.
But we didn't want to stop, um, resident from being told, right?
Yes, that's my, yeah.
Concern.
Right, so what I would do, and I think it's prudent to do, would be. If authorized to allow this, to wait until we had more information about the numbers.
When do we close enrollment?
This year, we're having enrollment close on August first. And allowing people to still, just so that we can get staffing organized.
Right.
Caused a bit of a problem this year that we had people enroll the day before school, and said, I'm enrolled, there's my paperwork, I'm in. And I was like, oh, jeez, we can't have that.
Right.
You know, so, so I just decided, okay, fine, keep your paperwork on August first, if you come on afterward, Madam Chair, if you, if you come afterward, then we'll see what we can do.
Do, exactly. The hard thing is that you can't wait till August first. If for some reason we weren't able to do it, she would have, she would have made an alternate arrangement, it could jeopardize her job.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm inclined to say, I'm inclined to allow a full-time staff person who works for Nahat, you know, I don't, I don't see much of a distinction. It's a tiny little town, so it seems like it's a nice thing to offer for somebody who works full-time in Nahat. Um, even if she doesn't work specifically for the schools, we work so closely, you work so closely together, Tommy, with the town hall, but, um, and you too, Kevin. I just want to make sure that we, we wouldn't inadvertently, unintentionally stop somebody else from not being able to send their own kid to preschool and lived here.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, and I'm not.
Could be.
I don't know that I'm reassured, that that's the case, so typically sixty percent of three-year-olds.
It was just a one-year, one-year study?
Yeah.
But.
I mean, are we on the edge here? Like, what do you?
Yeah, so. Than preschool typically.
And that ages.
Um, Madam Chair, through you, I. I like to have them at twenty, depend, um, in the past, we've had them up to twenty-two, depending on the needs of the students.
So between the two classes, a total of forty-four maximum?
That's what we've done in the past.
But you'd like to keep it closer to forty?
Depending on the needs of the students.
And right now, yeah, how many?
Sometimes you might have a student who has a side. Throwing blocks and.
Right.
Alright.
You know?
But, the total number of three-year-olds and four-year-olds are forty-one, and check my math.
And also, we get students enrolled throughout school year. So after September first, this is how many are, are age eligible on the first day of school, and then the September second comes, and someone says, can I join now? And I've already gotten somebody who wants to give me a check for October first, so.
And you say sixty percent of that number, of the number right there, or that is the number right there, you think, you think, not all those kids are gonna enroll?
I'll say, we'll probably get, um, I'm sure, I'll probably get ten students, ten of the eighteen on day one. And maybe we'll get eighteen of the twenty-three four-year-olds on day one. And now we're at.
There's still way below.
Twenty-eight.
That's what it seems like, yeah.
Right, twenty-eight.
We have.
But I'm just telling.
So that seems kind of a safer bet.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. I guess my, my, my reluctance, and, and I would, I would support this. But my reluctance here would just be that, to me, somebody who is employed by the town, like the school, they work here, they're here, you know. It's within our school, it's within our policy, but then to extend it to town and then not. You know, I guess, I just want to be clear on it, a resident, yeah, like if a resident who is caring for their. Family members and wants to then have those family members who don't live in Nahat, attend preschool. What is the difference? You know, to me. Like, a resident pays taxes here and does all the things, like, so, you know, an employee supports our community. You know, so I, I wouldn't, to me, it's unfair to allow one and not the other, and I, and I want to be fair.
So I actually fall into that situation, I'm the, I'm the parent that applied. Um, and my parents are residents of the town and are the caretakers for my son.
We're not, I, I don't mean to, um, interrupt, but we're not, um, on community input.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to talk, speak on that.
I'm sorry, we have a, um, community correspondence and input at the beginning of the meeting.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it's difficult because there has to be a line drawn, and is that line drawn between, you know, uh, Johnson School staff versus. Nahat community staff versus.
Right.
You know, leaving it open to, almost, I mean, you could in theory leave it open to anybody to enroll, because it's a, it's not. A pub, like, it's a pri, it's a private preschool, you know, in, in the town, so, um. I think that the. Previous situation isn't something that we as a group voted upon, and what were our, our decision right now is to vote on the proposal. That's in front of us.
So conceivably, like, somebody else could come in front of us, and then we would decide on that situation.
And I, and I, and I think that the, to me, the volume of requests. You know, for the Johnson School staff to accommodate is a certain bucket. The volume that you expand it to, if it includes Nahat, you know, um, like, you know, uh, people that work for the town of Nahat is a bucket. And then if you open it up to the bucket of people who are relatives of Nahat is a bucket, and that just seems like a much larger bucket to me. So. Um, I'm in favor. And it's okay if we don't agree.
Yeah, no, I, I'm in favor too, of opening it, of opening it up to, um, employees of the town.
Well, I don't know necessarily that that's what we need to vote upon, we're voting upon this specific.
This one case, yeah.
Because it's, I think it's in our policies that it's case by case, always.
Yeah, there's.
Always case.
There's multiple ways of looking at this, I think on the table right now is this one case.
Right.
Yes.
If the school committee wanted to address the policy and change it, that's a separate issue.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and I'm not suggesting one or the other, I'm just saying, right now, you have one request in front of you. Uh, the school committee is, has the authority to. Create fairness in the future by your own actions.
Right, yeah, right.
As compared to looking back and saying, I can't do this because back there.
Decided before.
Right.
I, yes, I agree with that, but I just want to make sure that, you know. To, on, on this subject, to me, somebody who is working in the town. And a resident of the town are one in the scene, you know, they're, they're each supporting the community by their employment and then by their residents. Um, so I wouldn't want to, um. Not give the same consideration to one over the other. Yeah, I think for me, I, I, I don't know if I would agree with you there, however. I, the thing that I find compelling is just that you are just saying something that.
I, the thing that I find compelling is just that you are just saying something that. You are suddenly, uh you are laying out a caution, that this decision could have implications down the road. Whether somebody comes forward in that situation, another, you know, we could end up with somebody who works part-time for the town. Right, like, there's all kinds of different things that could happen, and we have to be in saying, if we did say yes to this. We have to be prepared that we might have some other.
Requests.
Requests.
I agree.
Potentially, authority requests, right, and then there will be a sort of a duty of fairness that we will need to evaluate.
Right.
Um, it can't just be like, we're gonna allow this town employee and not that town employee.
Right.
How are people contributing to the town like I hear, bringing these stuffs up, so.
Right.
I think that's really important, I'm glad you did that.
And I think that's why when we did um amend the policy for J F A B, that we had. Specifically stated, students who are children of Nahat Public Schools.
Right.
To make it fair.
Right.
For um any um employee.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, does it make sense to amend this policy as well? At this time?
Regarding this specific request, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Uh, the request for the uh child of Allison Nieto. Uh, to attend the Johnson uh preschool in fall twenty twenty-three.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
I, I.
Okay. Thank you, members of the committee, and I will uh make sure the paperwork. Done appropriately, and I'm working on a monstrous packet of policies that need to be amended. And I'll just put this in as a possibility.
Yes.
Not knowing if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay? And Madam Chair, the last order of business. Somewhere in this file, there it is, you have the draft of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar. It reflects um. Very closely this year's calendar. We do have uh Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, uh so we leave it. Some people are doing Columbus, some doing Indigenous, I kinda did both. Um, and it's a very early school year, which is good.
Yeah, it is. Ending June twelfth, is that what you're saying? That's so weird.
With no snow days, it's the twelfth, with five snows, snow days, it's the twentieth. So. Yeah, girl, yeah, we ever see snow again. So Madam Chair, with your permission, I would respectfully suggest that we take this under consideration, you should know that the union. Has already reviewed it, as has uh Mister Andrews, and neither have had any problem with it.
Uh is the dates correct? Remember how last year we had to amend it, cause it was like one day off?
Yes.
Was that because of um Juneteenth?
Yes.
Okay, but it's correct.
It's correct.
Cause it's ending on.
I can't even imagine how I would explain to you how many times.
You guys.
Cherry and I looked at it, passed it out, and believe it or not, we had a mistake.
I know.
And so we did correct it.
Good. I mean, make.
You guys tell me what the, um, what is the first day of school, I was trying looking in my email for the packet, but I can't find it.
So the first day of school is the Tuesday before Labor Day, it's.
The twenty-nine.
August twenty-nine. That's what it usually is.
August twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-two.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And just one question, does this follow the Swamp Scott schools?
No.
No. Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, it doesn't.
They have uh other holidays than we have.
Okay. They have the Jewish holidays off, don't they, yeah?
Ah, okay, I have a lot to learn. I thought, as do you.
I know, I was gonna say, I think they should get on with the eleven-one after, day after Halloween holiday.
Yeah.
I mean, uh professional development.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, I love that, oh.
It's one of our strengths.
Yes, it is. Good thinking there.
Yeah.
Hmm.
No, that's just.
Okay, I will put that on the calendar for next meeting.
Yes.
So you can talk to people, et cetera. And Madam Chair, that ends the new business.
Do we have any other committee business to discuss at this moment?
Um, I I do, the other committee business that I wanted to bring up, that's something that we discussed in the past, was having. Um. The special, special education um meeting with the um Parent Advisory Council. We had discussed that a while back, um in having, inviting. Um, families to session with um. The special education um with Mary. Um, and also uh with the PAC, we were gonna look into having that correspondence come back. Because we were not having that communication with the PAC in Swamp Scott, cause that's my understanding, right, is that it's it's with Swamp Scott, so. Just wanted to bring that up, that that's still something that was, uh we discussed. Um, for next, yeah, I think we should, um, so that it doesn't get lost left.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, through you, uh since that was brought up, we have researched it. And have taken no action, but it is, we know how to go forward.
Okay.
Uh, we would have to be, uh it would have to be by invitation to special education parents. And we are willing and ready and able to do so.
Okay.
There are guidelines at the state level that we researched and um Mary actually did a lot of the legwork, so. It's, it's gonna happen.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything?
I don't have anything.
Does anyone else have anything?
No.
Does anyone have any announcements?
I do not.
I go.
A motion.
I'll, yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session, not to reconvene to open session. A reason being the approval of the executive session meeting minutes from January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. To discuss the discipline or dismissal of our complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-use in personnel. And to consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at nine oh five.
Did a great job, um.
I second that.
Leanna.
All in favor?
I.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.
Night.
There's one good thing is.
Yes. Five, yes.
Is Leanna gonna stay for the executives?
I think so, yeah. Are you gonna stay for, yeah, that's what Michelle did last time.
Yeah, I didn't wanna stop the voice recording. Yeah.
Did we jump onto a separate call or were we able to?
I'm staying on, but I'm staying by you.
I am.
I know you're leaving, so.
I just stayed on, I think.
You're trying to turn the recording off.
Second, the motion for the preschool.
Best thing, yeah.